All right, it's 9:30 on my watch and it looks like we have a good number of commissioners here for the Finance and Fiscal Resources Budget Work Session. So let's call the meeting to order and Wayman, would you please go ahead and read the notice regarding electronic participation?
Pursuant to Statute 15.263A, the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee of the County Board of Commissioners will conduct its Budget Work Session today via electronic communications to protect the public health. Any member of the public wishing to listen to the proceedings or provide public comment may do so by using the following internet connection or phone numbers and pass codes which are also listed on the screen. Close captioning is available via internet connection. Those wishing to provide input or ask questions in advance of the meeting regarding business to come before the committee may submit the input or questions to Kent County Administrator and Kent County MI.gov. I'll turn it back over to you and just a couple of comments as you open it up. Mr. Breeby, you're on mute.
Thanks. Just a reminder too, if you do have a comment during the meeting, you know, from the public, you can go ahead and email publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov and we will be a little bit later on in the meeting. But our next item on the agenda is review budget recommendations for 2021. You want to go start us off on that, Marvin?
Well, can I just make a couple of comments before we get started, Marvin?
Absolutely.
Just to kind of review where we've been so far and Marvin did a wonderful job in our last review session. We have taken those comments and questions and feedback from that first meeting just to kind of review where we've been. We had the review session with the Finance Committee and that was on September the 15th. We now are on 10/20 to review the remaining special review funds, special revenue funds. Last time we covered the general fund and the fund statements by category and by function. We also covered the, gave a summary, Marvin, did a summary of the submitted letter. And so today we'll take you through the special revenue funds and hopefully answer any questions. Just to remind everyone, we will be on the 3rd of November taking action on the recommendations and then a public hearing and a budget presentation on November the 5th. And then on the 19th of November, the recommendation will come before the full board for approval. And I'll turn it over to Marvin.
Thank you, Wayman. I'd like to share my screen. I think we have to have the other screen that's being shared taken down first though. Okay. Okay, you should see my screen now. Good morning, everyone. We're going to look at the special revenue funds as Wayman said for the proposed budget that have not yet been approved by the board. On your screen is a list of those funds that we'll talk about today. We can have discussions and questions as we go along and there will also be opportunity for further discussion at the end of my presentation. First, we're going to review the lodging excise tax fund. If you're following along with your budget document, this can be found on page 39. This fund accounts for proceeds generated from transient tax, which is levied on hotel and other room rentals in Kent County. Moving left to right, we have revenues and expenses by category. Followed by the 2019 actuals, 2020 activity and 2021 proposed budget on the right. The 2021 appropriation request for this fund is $9.7 million, supported by $8.7 million in revenue and $1 million in transfers in from the general fund while maintaining a fund balance of just under $9 million. Included in the 2021 proposed budget is $129,000 for administration, $10,000 for festival contributions, $1.5 million for contributions to experience Grand Rapids and $8 million for debt service. Mostly estimated revenues for this fund are $8.5 million, comes from transient tax revenue due to the COVID impact on hotel occupancy rates. We're seeing a 32% decline in lodging excise tax revenue as compared to the 2020 adopted budget of $12.5 million. The hotel occupancy rates in Kent County for 2019 were 65.4%. The rates are estimated at less than 40% for 2020 and projected at 48.6% for 2021. To fill the gap, the proposed budget included $1 million transfer in from the general fund along with the postponement or the reimbursement of the $7.1 million general fund advance that was made to this fund from 2008 to 2015. The current outstanding balance of the advance is just under $6 million. For 2020, it's proposed that $4 million be transferred from the general fund to the lodging excise tax fund to replace lost revenue. The proposed advance for 2020 and 2021 to bring the total outstanding advance from the general fund to just under $11 million. What's the total occupancy rates rebounding, current revenues can meet current obligations. The general fund advance would be reimbursed gradually over time. So obviously, we don't know, but we're currently estimating that this fund will begin to be self-sustaining again around 2024. And at that time, the fund balance will begin to gradually reimburse the general fund with the worst case scenario for full reimbursement being around 2032, so. Any questions on the lodging excise tax fund?
Yes, Voorhees.
All right, it looks like Commissioner Voorhees and then we have Commissioner Bukowski next.
Thank you, Vice Chair Breeby. Good morning. So we carry, I know there are some restrictions in that, but we carry kind of a healthy fund balance for the debt that we have there. There is no opportunities along the way. We looked at every opportunity of using some of that fund balance to pay down the high interest rate that we're paying on the debt for the obligation that we have there. And we looked at every opportunity of trying to, you know, put money to work, pay down the debt, pay off some of that interest. Is there any opportunity here?
Commissioner, no, this particular debt issue cannot be refunded in advance. So it's going to go to the full term when it'll mature in 2031. If you recall, this is interest deferred, so it's going to increase $300,000 a year. So currently, the debt payment's $8 million for 2021. By 2031, it'll be $11.1 million and that's why we we've advanced the funds from the general fund to kind of smooth that out so that come 2028, 29, 30, 31, the general fund doesn't have to kick in large sums of money. So while the general fund has advanced 7.1 million to date, we were starting to reimburse that advance until we got hit with the pandemic. We expect, like I said, for this to recover around 2024, we can start bringing that money back again. In worst case scenario, we'd have it all back by 2032 in the general fund. We look at this as a prudent use of available resources to maintain the fund balance necessary to meet those escalating debts, so.
Okay, that's just hard for a Dutchman here. We signed ourselves into an obligation like that. We can't, you know, pay off debt when we want to pay it off, not when they want to receive it. But yeah, and then I'll just bring up the thing as a fellow that thankfully enjoyed my 80th plus birthday that, you know, in all that we do, sometimes we don't want to pass on some of the debt or obligation that is due in that time rather than denying needs and opportunities now so that will protect the taxpayer down the road when the debt should be made sure that the obligations are being shared. So I just always keep that in mind in all that we're doing at the county, just in remembering that there are those of us who are in our more senior years don't want to see all of our opportunities put away because we want to protect people's taxpayers six years down the road. So, okay, just that we keep that all in mind. I appreciate, appreciate your work, man. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. All right, next up, we have Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Voorhees touches on how this debt is a thorn in our side as it's not a callable obligation since we've refinanced many things through the years that I've been on the commission. That being said, and I know this session is more focused on 2021, however, where are we getting the $4 million for this year's transfer? That seems like a pretty significant number within our general fund.
You're correct, that is, and because of the funding we got from the coronavirus relief fund that enabled us to shift public safety expenses to the coronavirus relief fund that freed up some money in the general fund and there may be some other areas. We don't, we don't know exactly where yet, but we know there's going to be a couple of different potential sources. We'll identify that later in the fourth quarter and we may be coming to the board, to the Finance Committee with a request to do a transfer to allow this to happen, so.
All right, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. Just to return to Commissioner Voorhees's point, so forgive me to ask, is there any reason why is there any reason why they can't draw from their current fund balance to meet some of the current lapses or the reductions in net revenues? You know, I realize we don't want to, we have very conservative fund balance policies and I do respect that, but I'm looking at their fund balance is 92% of their total annual budget. That's, I mean, twice as much, more than twice as much as our general fund balance. And I'm just wondering, is there, can please explain to me again why we cannot draw from that to meet some of the shortfalls caused by a reduction in revenue?
It's not that we can't. It's the pro forma that we ran a few years ago. I can't remember when, but I think Steve Worteck put a pro forma together that shared how the backloaded interest payments would affect our ability to pay. And so what we have here is a fund balance that takes us through 2032, 33 to allow for our ability to pay those. Marvin mentioned there's $3 million hit that will be occurring. So that's why. We could, but smart play is to make sure that we have enough in play to deal with the backend of this.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, we have another question here from Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Just putting my two cents worth in and I know you all hear me more than you would like, but it is something that comes up in my area a lot. These are numbers that will trouble many of my constituents and piggybacking on what Commissioner Woodin just said. We have a fund balance for a reason. It's when we have something catastrophic that happens. I would think that most of what has happened in 2020 is catastrophic. And personally, I would like to see us dig into some of that fund balance and I'm not, I'm not trying to get into a conversation. I'm just rendering an opinion. I think we have a fund balance for a reason and not just to let it set there just in case. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, any other hands up? I don't see any raised here. Marvin, you can take us away to the next item.
Okay, one final comment on this and I'll move on. You know, our forecast goes through 2032 and it draws down the fund balance from what we're seeing here now. Proposed $8.9 million down to $1.2 million in 2031 because of the growth in the debt. As I said, the debt will grow $300,000 per year. Our projection shows that we're going to spend it down each year after this year, 2021, down to $1.2 million in 2032. So the minimal fund balance required for this fund is one year's debt and that is approximately, excuse me, the minimal fund balance in 2031 will be $992,000. We'll have $1.2 million according to our forecast, so there is a plan. It's not, we're not trying to maintain an $8.9 million fund balance. We're just trying to maintain it so that the latter years, as Wayman said, we don't have to come up with additional funding out of the general fund operating budget and we don't know what the economic times are going to look like and that could translate to cutting budgets and so on and so forth, the positions and the like in order to meet those debt service payments. So we're just trying to be prudent and plan ahead, so. With that, I will move on to the next fund, Correctional Detention Fund. That can be found on page 43 of your budget document. This fund accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated millage levied to pay for operations and debt service related to the correction intention facilities. This is a 20-year millage that was approved by the voters in August 2008. The 2020 appropriation request for this fund is $24.3 million, supported by $20.4 million in revenue and $3.9 million in reserves, bringing the fund balance down to $10.2 million. Including the $24.3 million appropriation request, it's a $22.3 million transfer out, $18.5 million to the general fund to support the correction intention operations and facilities and $3.8 million to the debt service fund for the series 2016 and 2019 bond issues. The $2 million and other services and charges is a proposed budget contingency designed to create some flexibility to support operations for the correction intention facilities in these uncertain times should the general fund revenue estimates fall short. This will likely go unutilized and lapses appears less likely now that there will be a reduction in state revenue sharing. Most of the revenue for this fund or $19.8 million comes from current property tax collections. If the owner of a home with a taxable value of $100,000 will pay $77.17 towards the correction detention millage in 2021. Any questions on the correction detention millage proposed budget?
Looks like Commissioner Steck has a question here. Go ahead, Commissioner Steck.
Thank you. Again, Marvin, can you just again review, where does the $2 million come from?
That's a budget contingency that we've put in place in the event that revenues in the general fund would fall short if additional resources are required to support correction intention facilities. We could transfer that money to the general fund as necessary. That's not in the plan now. It was just a contingency in the event that it became necessary later. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, so again, you're transferring it from that into the general fund to help cover that projected $2 million.
Correct. And as I said, now that doesn't look as likely as it did a couple of months ago when we were preparing this proposed budget. So it is more likely to lapse now than we anticipated.
Because you were assuming that there would be a reduction in revenue sharing, which appears not to be the case. So is it reasonable to anticipate this whole $2 million may go away?
Correct. It would lapse and it would just lapse and stay within this fund, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all? I don't see any hands up at the moment. All right, we can move on.
Okay, next we'll look at the Special Project Fund, which is on page 57 of the proposed budget document. This fund accounts for activities financed primarily by restricted warrants and/or special revenue sources. The 2021 appropriation request is $12.7 million, supported by $11.4 million in revenue, $1.3 million in transfers in from the general fund and $87,000 in reserves. Programs included in this proposed budget are listed here, highlighting the funding sources for each. If you move in left or right, we have the programs in the first column, followed by the general fund revenue, non-general fund revenue, use of reserves and then the total budget for each of these programs in the far right column.
Excuse me. I'm not on the same page. Where are we, Marvin? I thought it was 67?
Page 58. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Thank you.
Okay, this one is on 57, I apologize. Okay. All right, so public safety makes up 11.9 million or 93.5% of this budget. The proposed budget includes, as I said, the programs listed on this slide, including township law, school resource officers, security, community oriented policing, correction crews, the guardianship program and the remontation grant. A more complete list of the programs can be seen in the schedule of uses on page 33 of the budget document. This budget maintains existing programs and services. Any questions on this particular budget?
I don't see any hands up at the moment, Marvin. Looks like you can move on.
Okay. Now we'll go to 58. This is the life-to-date Special Project Fund. Again, that's on page 58 in the proposed budget document. This fund accounts for multi-year activities financed primarily by special revenue sources. The 2021 appropriation request is $393,000, supported by $152,000 in revenue, $156,000 in transfers in from the general fund and $85,000 in use of reserves. Programs included in this proposed budget are listed here. Again, this highlights the revenue sources for each first columns, programs, followed by the general fund, non-general fund, revenues, use of reserves and then the total budget in the far right column.
Madam Chair, quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Talon.
Marvin, what page do we find that breakdown? Page 33 was for the previous special projects.
Yeah, page 34 will give you a more detailed breakdown of the programs in this fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Marvin on this fund? You guys don't have any questions today. All right, moving on.
Okay, next we'll look at the Fire Commission Fund, which can be found on page 35 of the budget document. Fire Commission Fund accounts for the acquisition of fire trucks and equipment for participating local units on a rotating basis. The 2021 proposed budget for this fund is $991,000, supported by $722,000 in revenue and $260,000 in transfers in from the general fund. The Fire Commission Fund or budget is in a transition period right now due to extended lead times required by manufacturers and apparatus orders. Extended lead time caused the unit budget in 2019 to be delivered and expensed in 2020. So as a result, there's a temporary increase in the fund balance. We expect to see this level back off no later than 2022, but we expect it probably even before that, as early as 2021. Other than the proposed budget for this fund is business as usual other than that, so. Any questions on this fund?
I don't see any hands up, Marvin.
Okay, next we can look at the Ready by Five Millage Fund, which can be found on page 38. This fund accounts for proceeds of a dedicated millage levered to provide for programs that improve the health, school readiness and well-being of children under age five. This is a six-year millage approved by voters in August of 2018. The 2021 appropriation request is $8.4 million, supported by $6.4 million in revenue, $2 million in reserves. Ready by Five Millage was approved by voters in November of 2018. As I said, the initial revenues were received in early 2009 before programming was fully implemented and built up a fund balance. It's expected that the reserves will be spent down over the next few years with the further implementation of planned programming. So as we see in 2021, we're proposing that $2 million should be spent down. It's estimated that $942,000 we spent down in 2020. A complete list of services for this program can be found on First Steps Kent, the website, which is listed at the top of the slide. The owner of a home with a taxable value of $100,000 will pay $24.64 towards the Ready by Five Millage in 2021. Any questions on this fund?
Yeah, it looks like we have a question from Commissioner Steck and then Commissioner Talon.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chair. So the $2 million that's drawn down from the fund balance, if I understand how the sequence works, that'll be sort of a one-time drawdown, but now they're going to be in sequence of matching the revenue against the expenditures on an annual basis, so we wouldn't see that ongoingly.
That's correct.
Thank you.
What will happen is what we'll see is if we get more further along in this and we have balances after the audit's completed, they may come back at the end of the first quarter and ask for additional resources for programming to utilize those resources just to keep the fund balance down to an appropriate level around $100,000 to $200,000.
You mean, the committee, the program may be asking for additional dollars out of the fund balance?
Correct. Once the audit's completed and we can define how much is available. And that goes for this and the senior millage as well. And that goes for all the for this and the senior millage as well.
This is generated primarily because of the delay between the revenue coming in and starting a program.
That's correct.
Thank you, man.
All right, Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair B V. Marvin, I didn't get a chance to check the the overall tax revenue projected increase, but I did note that for the ready by five millage, we're looking at a six point six percent change for zoo museum, we're looking at two point one percent change for senior millage, we're looking at six point one for correction and detention, we're looking at six point two. What's the reason that those are all different? I would have thought that they would be the same percentage. Can you talk about that?
Sure. That was good catch, by the way. The reason for the reason they're different is in prior years, we budgeted these tax revenue collections at ninety eight percent. And we've kind of changed philosophy on that a little bit. We're now budgeting them at a hundred percent. So instead of seeing an approximate four percent increase, the increase is a little higher because, like I said, we will change our philosophy on that. And the reason why the zoo museum millage is low is lower is because in two thousand and twenty, we budgeted a hundred, hundred and two percent collection. The reason for that was we were trying to build a budget that we didn't have to come back in a month later because revenues came in higher than we estimated. So we were being a little bit optimistic on that. As it turns out, we probably have to come back anyway for an amendment because the local community stabilization revenues probably to come higher, come in higher than we planned. So anyway, that's the reason for that. There's a little inconsistency for how it was budgeted in two thousand and twenty between the zoo museum and the other funds. And like I said, we changed philosophy for two thousand and twenty one going forward to budget one hundred percent of the total collection versus ninety eight percent.
Thanks. That's helpful. Can you point fairly quickly where we can see a similar percent increase for tax revenue overall for the general fund? Is that also at six point something percent projected increase?
Let's see if I can find that for you real quick here.
Sorry, I was looking for it, trying to find it quickly, but couldn't.
And if you recall, and that's not going to be the case with the general fund, and I'll bring a slide into the screen here. If you recall, in the general fund, we were conservative on the collection rate. Why the taxable value did go up four percent, we reduced the collections from the average annual collection of ninety six percent to ninety four percent as a result of the pandemic, not ensuring what the collection rates would look like. And the reason they're different from the other funds is for the for the general fund, we're working with the subsequent year's taxable value, which hasn't been finalized yet. And for the special project funds, we're dealing with the two thousand and twenty taxable value, which is finalized. We know what that value is. So they're a little different. They're not apples to apples.
So can you say that once again, we're for the special projects, for the special revenue, the special millages, we're looking at last year or this year's actual.
So, yes, so for twenty twenty.
On that.
Correct. So for twenty twenty one, for the special millages, we use the two thousand and twenty millage rate and the two thousand and twenty taxable value. For the general fund, since the property tax shift took place, we use the two thousand and twenty one estimated taxable value, and we use the two thousand and twenty one estimated millage rate. Both of those will be finalized in the spring of two thousand and twenty one. So there's more variables involved when it comes to the general fund projection.
Just this one comment that and it just seems like a significant difference of I'm looking at two point one percent increase in taxes on page twenty seven versus so four percent less that we're projecting based on that formula versus what we're projecting for the special millages.
That's just, okay. The reason, again, the reason for that is we budgeted a hundred percent collection in the special millages, and we only spend what's taken in. So like, for example, for the senior millage or the zoo museum millage, we only disperse what comes in. So one hundred percent of the zoo museum millage is dispersed to the zoo and the museum. They split it fifty fifty. General fund, because of the uncertain times, like I said, we reduce the estimated collection rate because we don't have that luxury of being able to just spend what comes in. We've got to, you got to do a realistic estimate so that we can build a realistic expense budget. Otherwise, we could potentially have other challenges down the road.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, next we have Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Marvin.
Good morning.
Just a quick question on the balance of two million dollars. Will that money be spent on expanded programming, or will it be some sort of new program?
That's a good question. It could be, it would be spent on expanded programming, but I think the expectation at this point is it'd be carried forward and built into the two thousand and twenty two budget. So we're not trying to spend it all in one year. We're trying to stage it out over two or three years and bring it down to a real reasonable level. Because they got a late, because the funding came in so far in advance of the programming starting.
So, yeah, it's, you know, I'm just, my concern would be that we move outside the scope of what the money was earmarked for. I just want to make sure we stay on track and the money is used in relation to what the taxpayers voted for. It doesn't get outside of that with that new money. I'm sure that's not going to be a problem. I just wanted to bring that up.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Antor. I don't see any other hands up at this time.
Okay, next, we can go to the zoo museum millage fund on page forty one. This fund accounts for a dedicated millage levy to pay for operations and debt service related to the zoo and museum millage. This is a ten-year millage approved by voters in August of two thousand and sixteen. The two thousand and twenty one appropriation request is for eleven point four million dollars, supported by eleven point four million dollars in revenue. Revenue generated from this millage, as I said previously, is split equally between the zoo and the museum. And the two thousand and twenty one budget is pretty much business as usual. See at the bottom, right, the owner of a home with a taxable value of a hundred thousand dollars will pay forty three dollars in taxes towards the zoo museum millage in two thousand and twenty one. Any questions on this particular fund?
Yeah, other than just saying being on the zoo board and seeing the great accomplishments that are being made there. It was a great investment when the people voted so strongly in favor of it and we just compliment our community and the quality of life issues and thankful for this this tax revenue for our cultural entities. Thank you.
Harold, do you think you could sing us the song? Do you remember that? Okay, moving on. We have, let's see, Commissioner Talon with a question.
Thank you, Chair B V. Marvin, I apologize if you said it, but the intergovernmental four hundred K, what is that?
That is the local community stabilization share revenue. That's the state's replacement for personal property tax revenue.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. And you'll see that in all the millage funds.
All right, any other hands up for that? Any other questions for Marvin? I don't see any. Okay, Marvin, you can go ahead.
Okay, next, senior millage fund on page forty two. This fund accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated millage levy to plan, coordinate, evaluate, and provide services to persons sixty years of age or older. This is an eight-year millage approved by approved by voters in August of two thousand and fourteen. The appropriation request for this fund is thirteen million dollars, supported by thirteen million dollars in revenue. A complete list of services can be found on the area agency on Asian of Western Michigan website, which is listed at the top of the the slide. The owner of a home with a taxable value of a hundred thousand dollars will pay forty eight dollars and eighty eight cents toward the senior millage in two thousand and twenty one, and this proposed budget maintains existing services. Any questions here?
I see Commissioner Stack has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So Marvin, having just gone through that allocation meeting or meetings last week and this week, I think that we were projecting twelve point five million to allocate and did not have the additional four hundred. Is that been confirmed? And will that go back to the committee for reallocation?
Well, we do expect that to that to take place in the first quarter. This is this is what's been appropriated in terms of budget dollars. They know that there's going to be some additional resources becoming available in twenty twenty. We had a discussion with them a week or two ago. And what we're going to do is after the towards the end of the audit, or we have a good audited number, we'll let them know how much is available on resources, and they'll come back and ask for a supplemental to use those resources in addition to the the four hundred thousand dollars that you mentioned.
So in the four hundred, then we'll have to go back to the committee for reallocation or allocation. It's the first time. The other thing is I I thought that we were being that that we were discovering, we're going to have about one and a half, maybe even more than two million dollars of lapsed funds from two thousand and twenty. Does that go to the fund balance once it lapses?
Well, there's a couple of things working there. It depends, you know, how the revenues come in and then how the lapse, how lapse comes in. So, but yes, to answer your question, it would go into the fund balance. Actually, we'll define that once the we get further along the audit process to determine what is available. And we'll come back in the first quarter, early second quarter to ask for additional supplemental for additional resources so they can expand the programming.
But again, it goes back to the fund balance pending further allocation or reallocation.
Further appropriation and allocation, yes.
All right, it looks like we have questions from Commissioner Hennessy and then Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. I I am looking at the the senior millage, the final funding recommendations. And actually, the amount we had available to to allocate was even lower than what Commissioner Stack was remembering, you know, remembering as he from memory. It was only twelve point one eight. And so I, and there's, there's quite a discrepancy. Plus, then you have the the amount that won't be spent this year. But as we were going through this very intense week of negotiations, we were not meeting the recommendations on things like food, meals for seniors. We were going less than what the agencies said that they would need. And I'm, you know, I'm really concerned about how the county tells the area agency on aging what is available in the lapse. What is the point of us spending forty hours or so looking at all of this if if the numbers and the decisions we make are really going to have to be over and revisit it again?
Well, there's a couple of things answers to that question. First of all, the I would I would guess that the number we're talking about, the twelve million and change, is the is the programming dollars. There is an administrative fee that goes to that to the area agency on aging as well. So that I'm sure that number is not included in there. So that might be the difference between the two. But the reason that we we handle the available reserves the way we do is we kind of have to go through the the year-end tieout. We don't know what's going to be available for certain today. We won't know until sometime in January or maybe February. So we don't want to allocate resources that aren't available. And this is kind of how we've been doing it in recent years. We will, like I said, get through the started with the audit process, get a more defined number, and then area agency on aging will come back and ask for an additional appropriation. It's it's been working. That's what we've been doing the last few years. And like I said, the discrepancy between the two numbers, I'm sure the administrative fee is is part of that.
That's my recollection as well, Marvin. I'm pretty sure that's what that is.
Okay, I I can appreciate the administrative fee is not in here. Okay, it still leaves a gap, but that's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hennessy. All right, we have Commissioner Antor and then Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. I hope we all agree there's no such thing as a dumb question because I'm going to test that threshold right now. Is any of this money ever moved forward in the form of individual checks to individuals? Or is this all services predominantly?
Well, I I believe it's all programming services that are coordinated through the areas, area agents on aging. So all funding flows to them, and then they distribute distribute the funds to their various agencies that they work with.
Okay.
Individual vouchers for for transportation needs and so forth, but mostly all of it is like Marvin said, services, but there are vouchers, I believe, correctly, if I'm wrong. Commissioner Hennessy and Stack and I don't know if Sanders on the phone, but I think that's the way it works.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's any redundancy that, you know, someone may qualify for something through the senior millage, and then they also qualify, let's say, through senior or, excuse me, veteran services or something like that. Is there a way of catching those so we're not paying out twice for the same service?
Now, this is Commissioner Stack. I think maybe answer a little bit of that. Certainly, the the work of AAA and the committee is is always attentive to those sorts of duplications. We're very cognizant of our need to make sure that we're spending these wisely. So that is looked for. And I think that that way, man, is correct, that all of the funds go to the programming agencies. But within the scope of those, there may be vouchers that are occasionally distributed to individuals depending upon the particular program. No?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I was not muted. I apologize. Go ahead. I was just going to say that the the Kent County Senior Millage Funding Act works differently than the Veterans Millage Funding in that the service funding only goes to the agencies and who are providing services. But some of those agencies have funding structures, like Senior Neighbors, for example, they have emergency needs funding that they might use for an individual, but for a very specific purpose to fix a very specific problem. But my apologies.
No, I think you said just what I said. So we're on the same page.
That that sounds good. I appreciate the input, Stan. I just, I just wanted to double check, make sure that because animal veterans services provides emergency funding for individuals, it sounds like this does too. Just make sure that those two agencies are in contact with each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Stack, you have your hand up for a question.
Yeah, I think I was just going to follow up a bit on Commissioner Hennessy's observations about, I mean, I assume that we sit for forty hours because we enjoy our company so much. But beyond that, it was the I think the magnitude of the of the lapsing of funds is quite unusual this year, and it's obviously due to the COVID experience, but and I think that we will be spending another significant amount of time in the spring to address that lapse funding.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Stack. I don't see any more hands up, Marvin.
Okay, let's move on to the Veterans Millage Fund, which can be found on page fifty of the proposed budget document. This fund accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated millage to provide burial assistance, non-recurring emergency financial assistance, and a contact for information about available veteran services and programs. This is an eight-year millage approved by voters in November of two thousand and fourteen. The two thousand and twenty one appropriation request is for two point nine million dollars, supported by one point three million dollars in revenue, three hundred thousand dollars in general fund support, and one point two million dollars in reserves to ramp up services. Expanded programs and services include four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for additional housing services, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for additional outreach, and additional funding for dental care services, trained service dogs, substance abuse services, and suicide prevention services. The owner of a home with a taxable value of a hundred thousand dollars will pay four dollars and eighty seven cents towards the Veterans Millage in two thousand and twenty one. Questions on the Veterans Millage?
I don't see. Oh, it looks like Commissioner Stack has his hand up. I don't see, oh, it looks like Commissioner Stack has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. The drawdown from the fund balance of about 1.2 million, obviously that can't be perpetuated. But is that just all additional unique programming because of COVID?
I don't believe so. I think it says for the expanded programming that, you know, that I just provided here on the screen. I don't believe it's tied to COVID necessarily. Martha, maybe on the line, she can talk about it in more detail.
I'll just look at it because expenditures 2.8, given the revenue of 1.2, you can't keep doing that year after year.
Right, get the 1.3 million dollars of proposed revenue plus the $300,000 transfers in. You're correct, this is a one-time deal to bring down some of those dollars and it will the budget will have to be within the available available resources going forward, obviously.
Commissioner, this is Wayman. One of the things that we have worked with the Subcommittee of the Veteran Services Department over the years is to try to move towards a spend down of the fund balance. I think we're moving in that direction now. It's taken a while. There's been some changes in leadership on that Subcommittee over time. And then there was a real push early on, be very careful about how we spend those those precious dollars that came in. Because we worked hard to convey the importance of only spending those dollars for veterans in need. And so I think now that Martha's and we've we've ramped up our relationship with the Subcommittee and have, I think, begun a process of identifying ways to spend those dollars that fit the Subcommittee's their purview and their and their wishes. So I think we're on a track to spend that down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have Commissioner Wooden and then Commissioner Talon.
Thank you Chair. Quick question. I'm seeing more about the services themselves. I'm seeing, you know, so many of these services all very worthwhile are also, you know, things like substance abuse, suicide prevention, they're mental health related. Was the decision to draw from veteran funds dollars was because of the need to create more tailor-made veteran services? Or was it often because we were already noticing issues with funding mental health services at Network 180? That we have a statewide mental health funding issue? Is it to kind of buttress the gaps in funding? Or is it the need for more tailor-made services and it makes more sense to draw from this funding?
I think the latter, the tailor-made, I think the latter comment is what what I believe I would hear from Martha and the Subcommittee is that they are really working hard to identify specific needs related to veterans. And of course, there are going to be gaps. As you know, we've had issues with the mental health funding over the last several years via Network 180 and the LRA. But I think that gap is closing now.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this is Commissioner Stack. I think that we do continue to utilize available Medicaid funding wherever possible first before drawing that.
Thank you Stack. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you Chair Bravy. You know, Wayman, you said we're on a track to spend down that fund balance. But the track is just one year. I mean, we're basically spending it down in one year and that concerns me. I think that's a little bit of what others have expressed as well. I'm wondering if we could get a more detailed update on on what that 1.5 million is is being used for. I see, you know, the expanded programs, but it concerns me that if that's just a one-shot, one-year deal, that doesn't feel very efficient or effective to me to try to ramp up additional services and then all of a sudden have to ramp them down. So a little more background on what the thinking is there would be appreciated.
You bet Commissioner, we'll make sure that happens. Martha, if you're on the line, I hope you caught that. Let's follow up afterwards and make sure that we put some information together for Commissioner Talon and the rest of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead Martha.
No, I just was saying, yes, I'm happy to work with Wayman to provide that information.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any additional questions on this topic.
Okay, that completes the presentation on the various funds. Looking forward, the Finance Committee, as Wayman said, is scheduled to act on the proposed budget on November 3rd. The public hearing in the budget presentation will be on November 5th. And the Board will be scheduled to act on the on the full budget at its meeting November 19th. So if there are any questions or information that on the information that's been presented or anything of interest that hasn't been discussed, I'd be glad to have discussion on those topics now.
And any of the questions that were raised at the end, I know Commissioner Talon had a question. We'll make sure we follow up on that question related to veteran services and so forth. So thanks Marvin.
Commissioner Talon, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have an additional request if it could be considered. Many years ago, 2011, I'm looking at an old email. I had asked Daryl DeLavio for a breakdown of the Board of Commissioners budget, the specifics of it. I'm wondering if we could get that again. It's been a long time since I've seen that. But and and it could be that that Board of Commissioners budget is not separately tracked anymore. I don't know, but
It is, it is.
Okay, you know, wondering about personnel costs, staff costs, Board of Commissioners salaries, and retirement and so on. Memberships like the Chamber MAC, travel, what we're budgeting for travel and what we're paying for consultants and who those are. Could we get a summary of that for the Board of Commissioners budget? I think it'd be good for all of us to see that.
Sure can Commissioner.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you Commissioner Talon. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you Chair. Wayman and likely maybe a question for Marvin and Steve that not for today, but maybe for November 3, when the budget's presented, if there could be a little deeper dive into our revenue projections. You know, this, this document that we have before us, you know, is a couple, three months old. And in COVID times, that, yeah, we've learned a lot. Or I should say you've learned a lot and staff have learned a lot. So, so, yeah, I mean expenditures seem in line with revenue projections. But just again, would would like a deeper review of those revenue projections, making sure we're, we're really on that as solid ground as we can can be. Because of course, even more will change January 1 forward.
Sure, and just so, we sure can. And then in addition to that, Jeff Dot, our Fiscal Services Director, will be providing a third quarter financial report, which will have some of that information in it as well in the month of November.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Talon again.
Thank you Chair. This is kind of a general question. Came to my mind in response to Bukowski's question. And that is, have we ever changed the budget between when this budget document is presented to us? And then what goes before the full board or before the Finance Committee? Do you, have we ever changed? I mean, obviously, three, four months between when the budget is prepared and when it goes before the committee. And things can change, as was just suggested. Do we, have we ever changed that? And if not, what's the thinking there that that we don't update that? Is it that we, we just do a budget change early in the year? A little bit of conversation about that, thanks.
Okay.
Well, I can speak to the changes that I don't believe we've made any changes maybe once in the last 20 years. I, I don't recall specifically why that was. It was something that the Board added, I think, late. But I don't recall specifically what it was. And that's been quite a few years ago, but just one time that I can remember.
And, and what's the thinking in that? If, I mean, if we have changes in revenue projections of significance, is it really, really difficult to redo the budget on that basis? What's the thinking?
Yes, it can be a challenge. However, if we had identified specific needs and specific resources for those needs, it can be done, obviously. But like I said, it hasn't been done historically. Usually the numbers we that we come up with for the revenue estimates are realistic. And we haven't had a need to change them in the past, so.
There have, there have been occasion where we've underestimated expenses where we had to come back to the Board to ask for additional appropriation. You might remember those times. I can remember the medical examiner, for instance, and maybe the train commission. There have been occasions where we had to come back to you for those adjustments in many years.
Yeah, subsequent to adoption.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other additional questions, comments?
I have a quick comment Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Antor.
I just want to say how much I like this new way of doing these meetings, piggyback on to other meetings. We're a lot more efficient these days. I think that's maybe something good that came out of the COVID. Now, we discovered new ways, more efficient ways to meet. And I like doing it this way, save trips down there.
Absolutely. If there's any additional questions, feel free to ask them here. And if you think of something, you know, after the meeting, contact Wayman or Marvin.
If I could make it, just make, I like to make a suggestion, I guess I if there are questions, I like to propose that we email them to Pam before October 27th. And that'll give us plenty of time to respond with a Q and A document prior to the meeting on November 3rd. Sometimes there's questions that come up later that you didn't think of it, you might want to ask and like to accommodate those if there are any.
Yeah, thank you. We want to make sure everyone has their questions or concerns answered. So email them to Pam before October 27. Anything else Wayman or?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bravy. Thank you so much. And we look forward to meeting with the full board and answering any questions that's outstanding. And please do get us your questions if you have any.
All right, seeing no additional questions, it looks like it's time for public comment. Do we have anything in the public comment inbox at all Pam or Natasha?
I don't see any messages in the inbox, public comment inbox. And it does not look like there are any hands raised in the chat.
All right, we'll give the public just a little bit of time here if they have something that comes to mind and want to speak up. I always appreciate hearing from them at our meetings and getting their thoughts and insight. All right, seeing no comments from the public, it's Commissioner miscellaneous and it looks like we have Commissioner Melton.
Thank you Chair. I really just wanted to thank our staff. I cannot even imagine how for for me, it would be a frustration. I don't know what what emotion it elicits in you. But here you worked so very hard to make the boardroom ready, may find a place for us as commissioners to meet for our full board. And just to have, what, three meetings so that we could go back to virtual again. And I, I just really think that that needs to be noted. All of us commissioners, I would hope are very, very appreciative of that. And we, at least I recognize that that's got to have been an added stress that you didn't need and an added frustration that you probably didn't need on top of everything else. So I just wanted to, I don't, just thank you.
Well, thank you Commissioner Melton. That's greatly appreciated. I want to just defer all the compliments to the staff that have been so very diligent. And can't thank them enough for how they've weathered the storm, so to speak. So thank you so much for that.
Thanks Commissioner Melton. Any other comments from the commissioners? I just have one, you know, I'm really grateful for decisions that have been made in the past that have allowed our county to have solid financial footing. And now we are in a time where there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding COVID and, you know, what's shaping up in the economy. So I'm grateful for the decisions that have been made in the past. And, you know, I look forward to moving along cautiously in the future. And, you know, I'm thankful that you guys were able to put together a solid budget and, you know, cautious too. So thank you all very much. And if there's no additional comments, we will adjourn the meeting. Seeing none, meeting's adjourned. Thanks for all your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have a great day.